Good evening, and welcome to this, the July 14th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Branning.
Here.
Mayor Marchand.
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, and indivisible.
Thank you. We just came out of closed session. I'll ask the city attorney, is there any reportable action that was taken during our closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Oncall. Your city attorney? No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session. That concludes my report.
Okay, we have no proclamations or presentations tonight. Moving on to the open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. The city clerk will explain how they can participate, how the public can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out a card, excuse me, please fill out a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
I suppose we should do that first before we go through the whole explanation.
The first speaker is Craig Younger, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Si Martin.
Good evening, council. They tell me that the more often you do this, easier it gets, but I don't think that's going to be the case. I hope I don't have to do this very often. My name is Craig Younger. I'm a homeowner and resident at 2224 Third Street. This is located between Livermore Avenue and J Street. I give you this information because of what I'm about to speak about this evening. I would like to discuss the opening of Metal Arc Dairy, which will be coming soon. As someone who grew up in Pleasanton, I'm well aware of the historical significance of this business, and I welcome it to Livermore. What I do not welcome is any idea of a drive-through service being allowed to operate. Again, as someone who grew up in Pleasanton, I'm well aware of the drive-through situation there and the trouble they have with traffic. In Pleasanton, drive-through service is necessary because there is no onsite parking associated with the business property. This is not the case in Livermore. In Livermore, their property has at least 20 spaces, as well as adjacent public city parking and other available parking on the street. While I want this business to be successful, I want them to do it within the constraints of a business that has a storefront, which they do. There's absolutely no reason to approve drive-through service for this location. As someone who lives really close by, in fact, I think I'm the closest resident to what this business is going to be. I have yet to see a questionnaire in my mail regarding how this would impact me as a resident or the surrounding businesses. I don't recall being invited to any sort of community outreach meetings regarding this. I believe all local residents and businesses need be part of any decision making regarding a drive-through service at Metal Arc Dairy. The impact of parking and traffic along Second Street, which I imagine would be the point of entrance, would be dramatic. People not being able to allow to park at local businesses, or worse, not being able to leave once they have parked because of a line waiting for drive-through service. I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say that, excuse me, that you can expect a line of up to 30 cars waiting for drive-through service on a typical summer night, as this is often the case in Pleasanton. I understand there's another local fast food business that has drive-through service, but at no time do they have more than three or four cars in their line, and it comes in from a side street. So that's kind of a moot argument. I hope council will make sure there's an ample opportunity for public opinion on this matter to be considered and weighed before any decision is made. I have spoken to the owner through message. He knows my concerns and understands why we don't think drive-through service would be necessary for his new location. Thank you, council, for listening. I look forward to an opportunity to get together with my fellow local residents and business owners to discuss this matter further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Younger, and we both spend too much time on next door.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Si Martin.
Good evening. I'm Greg Scott. No doubt, most of you have heard about the incredible horrible disaster last July 4th in, on the Guadalupe River in Texas. Last I heard, 120 lives have been lost, 150, 160 are still missing. Jobs, economy, it's just an incredible disaster. The hardest hit area is Kerr County, and the head administrator of Kerr County came out and said, well, they had no expectation of anything like this. Really, they live in Flash Flood Alley. 38 years ago, minus two weeks, they lost 10 people. Their bus and a van were marooned in the Guadalupe River. They had to get out, the 40 occupants of those vehicles got out of the river, tried to make it to the side of the river. They're all swept down the river and 10 miners died. In 1978, 33 people died in the floodwaters of the Guadalupe River. In 1932, seven people died in the Guadalupe River floods. Since 1966, there has been 30 occasions of that river rising over 20 feet. And Rob Kelly, the head administrator of Kerr County, says they have no expectations to that. He has no understanding of statistics and outliers, and he lives in Flood, Flash Flood Alley. He has no expectation. We have the technologies, satellite technology, multiple radar technologies, LiDAR, light distance skin ranging, ranging technologies. And we have little communication devices. This little communication device has eight or nine billion field effect transistors. And we had, in the National Weather Service gave, first warning was in 1:14 their time in the afternoon. Second flash flood warning was given at 1:18 a.m. in the morning. And they gave an emergency evacuation order at four, after four in the morning. The National Weather Service did its job. There was a fall down in many aspects. So what's the point here? The point is, you're thinking it can't happen in Livermore. Well, I understand our geology is different. We don't have a limestone bedrock that's impervious like there. But I've gotten up twice in front of the city council here and talked about the atmospheric river of 1861, 1862, which occurs every 165 years on average. The category one atmospheric river, that was 164 years ago. So we're just about due. In that category one atmospheric river, it rained 10 feet in a little over 40 days in most of Northern California. It rained five feet in Los Angeles. It usually doesn't rain five feet in five years in, in Los Angeles. So are we, how prepared are we for the outlier? You know, we're thinking that, well, the disaster is over there. No. So, you know, they say they weren't ready for this, and the point here is that you can't plead ignorance. You heard about it tonight. Get ready.
The last speaker is Si Martin.
Good evening, honorable mayor, honorable council members and the public. My name is Si Martin, resident of the U.S. City, and I'm an American Iranian citizen and have few parents to make over here. Number one is, as a citizen, I'm following, whether I'm driving or being in the city, I found some issues. There was, appeared to be some contaminated water dripping to that creek by the airport. I checked it out, and city was very responsive. And they took quite over the pond. There was no problem. The other issue is library has a veneer in front of it, and recently I discovered that they are dying. The water apparently was hot. I contacted the library personnel, and apparently they're gonna be taking care of it. I haven't been there lately to see if it is done or not. Number three issue is, since I am from Iran, I'd like to introduce Iran a little bit for the community. Since I'm a teacher, I asked the students, where is Iran? Many of them, they don't know. So Iran is the kind of southern part of Russia, Persian Gulf, basically a good representative of it. History was, Iran was a Persian Empire one time, and used to fight with Greek or something at that time, Alexander the Great, all those things. And then Iran has scholars, as I'm not sure how many people are known. In that day, been very active about 1,000 years ago in science, poetry, philosophy, many of them, you may have heard about Rumi. And, but other than Rumi, there is some others, mainly Sadi, Hopes, Perdosi, Zomig, and Javi. There is one interesting, very powerful poem from Sadi, which is translated from Persian and written on the entry door of the United Nations, which is basically saying, the human races are the parts of the same body, and consider the whole humanity as one body. If one part of the body or one race goes to pain, the whole body will feel the pain. If you are not sensitive to the pain and suffering of the other humans, your name should not be a human. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes open forum.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment period. Just a quick question for, for staff. Is there any proposal at this time for a drive-through at Metal Arc Dairy?
Mr. Mayor, this is Paul Spence, your assistant city manager. No, there is not a proposal right now for a drive-through.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to consent, I understand that we'll have two separate actions for consent. Is there anybody who wishes to have an item pulled, anybody from the council who wishes an item pulled for consent?
512.
512?
Is that the legislative platform?
Legislative platform.
That's what I wanted to pull as well.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, do we have any speakers for the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Greg Scott.
Greg Scott, 5.2 on the stream maintenance. Again, I'm emphasizing your outliers. Now, you recall 2017, the rainfall we had then in February on the Arroyo Mocho, you spent something the city council authorized $650,000 for the repair from that rain. My point here is, get ready. We need to be getting ready. We need to take precautions. And as I mentioned in Texas, it's funny that they remember, don't remember 38 years ago. That's within the experience of a lifetime. Well, it's a little tougher for us with the category ones, the type of atmospheric rivers that occur, because it's outside of a lifetime. And that atmospheric river I'm talking about, there, you know, Robert Liver Jr. knew exactly where to build his house. He saw a tremendous amount of rain here. But that was 164 years ago. It's outside of any lifetime here, but we forget that. Unlike an indigenous culture, we forget that time period. And it's, it's to our detriment. So we really need to do stream maintenance, thinking about more the outliers. Okay, do I get to comment on another one too, or do I, at the same time? Okay, that's 5.2. Please get ready for what's coming. 5.7, and of course, this is on the hyperchlorite, which Mayor Marchand is going to know more about the chemistry than I am, but this is amazing to me that we're still sterilizing with sodium hypochlorite, which is bleach. And what, for the public, what it does is chlorine has a certain affinity for proteins, a strong affinity. When you, when you have that affinity so strongly, it takes it out of solution. So when you sterilize in a solution like wastewater with sodium hypochlorite, your concentrations change up and down dramatically depending on your plumes of protein. Does it work for killing bacteria and attaching to proteins? Well, yes, but the problem is monitoring that level. The other problem is some of your side chemicals you get, and in Europe, they banned water sanitation with sodium hypochlorite because of some of the side chemicals. Trihalomethanes, for instance, some of these chemicals are carcinogenic. Its reaction with phenols. I wrote a letter to the Independent about this one time. It wasn't listened to, but it's really different. And then the question is, because of the volumes and the, and the change in the, the difficulty of titrating, the concentrations, a lot of communities have gone, because of the volume of water, they've gone to chloramine. And chloramine has its own problems, but it's easier as far as concentrations. It's got its own problems. It draws lead out of pipes. If you have older pipes, as the East Coast has found out, but we really need to look at some of the health effects of sanitizing our water with sodium hypochlorite. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, let's see, 5.12, we had some comments on that. So let's, we'll take all the comments first, and then we'll separate into two different votes. So you had some questions or comments on 512?
Yeah, just small things. We might be able to lump it back in with everything with the changes, but I just wanted to add two items. I already sent these to staff, so they had some wording on them. One was adding an item under fiscal stability and general governance, which is basically to address the fact that lately, there's been a lot of proposals for legislation that would either delay or restrict our ability to collect impact fees. And impact fees, of course, are because there is an impact of the development. We need to offset it. Whether we collect the fees or not, we would have to pay for the costs. So I asked for language in there that would say, oppose legislation that restricts or prohibits the collection of development impact fees, or otherwise reduces local government's ability to require developments to pay its development to pay its fair share of infrastructure and service costs. So if staff worked with me to get the language on that correct, but, so Paul has the specific language as well. So that was one that I thought was important for us to have. And the second was an edit to an item under job creation and economic development, which is because our city does support neighborhood retail, and we want our opportunities to have neighborhood retail, just editing one of the items to say, as edited, it would say, support legislation or grants that focus on walkable, transit-oriented, and complete districts with access to services and neighborhood-serving retail, encouraging mixed-use development that integrates residential, commercial, and retail use to support vibrant local economies. And so those were the two items that I saw as kind of a, could use a little strengthening in our language, so I was hoping to add those in. Those were my comments on the legislative question. I believe Councilmember Dunbar has others.
May I ask a clarifying question on your first one? You mentioned delays in impact. Like, I totally understand collection or capping of fees, because obviously, we don't set them to make a profit. We set them to collect the impacts that are committed, but the delays, I've heard some conversations about delaying it until the construction is actually complete. Are we concerned about that? Usually, that's just sort of a de-risking thing, where if they go under halfway through and they don't actually build the units, they wouldn't have an impact because they didn't get built. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I'm, my concern is, when a project is half-built, there is impacts still on the city. It might not cover all of our impact fees, but they've, the last round of legislation that was proposed, I believe, eliminated all impact fees until, until the permitting was finalized, which would leave us potentially with a half-built building with partial connections that now we have to deal with. And so I think there's some flexibility with the legislature on which fees win.
Yeah.
But I don't want to stand up in a situation where everything has to wait till the end. We end up with a project that's half-finished, we get nothing, or what's been proposed but hasn't made a lot of impact yet, which is just simply eliminating some of the fees that we really do need to be able to survive as a city.
I think that makes sense. Blanket would be too far. There's probably some things we could probably target. There are probably some things that don't have an impact unless it gets completed, so.
Exactly.
All right. I have my own couple that staff has seen as well. This is being my first crack at legislative platform up here and not seeing it for two years. So I had the following. One was, I try to be cognizant of stuff that San Francisco would also say, or would help them in, in creating a jobs housing imbalance. So with regards to the, the incentives for additional jobs, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that we supported employment generators that maintain a reasonable jobs housing balance, not just for the sole purpose of, you know, jobs. If someone comes in and they can do a tax deferment for a billion dollars, which we could never do, to keep all the jobs and leave us with the housing responsibilities, that's not something we're going to go along with.
Housing and the transportation responsibility.
Right. Indeed. So that was, that was one that I thought we could add in there in that economic development section. With regards to density bonus, we've had a couple of exemptions. Using the density bonus to not have similar unit types, which I generally have been unhappy with. I understand it's legal today, but we should oppose that where, where possible. You know, I know it's, there's some cost benefit. I know it exists there, but I'd like the state legislator to actually come up with a solution that allows for mixing the units where possible. So we could support something like that. I think the, the easy one is PFAS for mediation funding. I think we talked about that, just adding that in there. Support for legislation that increases oversight and cost transparency of investor-owned utilities such as PG&E, wildlife mitigation investments, and managing energy rates to reduce financial strain on residents, while also incentivizing additional high efficiency, like heat pumps and installations like that, that come along with lower energy bills. With, I think I skipped one. With regards to transportation, where to go? With the item on congestion on the 580, I'm always cognizant when we're talking about congestion mitigation, that we're trying to balance cost-effectiveness with community impacts, such as air quality or noise. But I don't like the blanket statement of reducing congestion. I want it to be in sort of a trade-off, so making a minor modification to the language there. And then support legislation that improves regional air quality through cleaner fuels, emission standards, and air quality management funding. Those were my suggestions.
Any other comments? Staff? Your thoughts on the potential modifications? Are those, those sound reasonable?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. Councilmembers, those changes are acceptable to staff. So if the motion maker could incorporate them or reference them in the motion, the changes again are acceptable to staff. Thank you.
All right.
Then, what we able to do, approving consent calendar items 52 through 513, I think? Through 513, with the amendments made from Vice Mayor Branning and Councilmember Dunbar incorporated into item 512. Does that work as a motion? Okay, then I will make that motion.
Okay, so 52, 35.
513.
13.
So the, the remainder other than the minutes.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Branning, seconded by Councilmember Dunbar. Just a few comments that I have, if I may. So on 5.4, the city just dropped the waste, the solid waste connection fee by over 8%. So will the action that we're taking tonight have any effect on that decrease?
No, sir, it will not.
Okay, no, it's good. Okay, forgot that one. 5.5, the, the project for us is to replace 3,500 feet, linear feet of sewer lines. And that's at a cost of $4.8 million. And just, just, we just had a, we reworked the sewer fee. And we were estimating the sewer system was, the enterprise was worth about $600 million. I did a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation. One and a half million linear feet of sewer line in the city. And at $4.8 million for 3,500 feet, that replacement, including the repaving, that puts the value of our wastewater system, the pipes, at about $2 billion. So just as a matter of scale, that, that's, that's a tremendous investment that we have in our system. And that's why it's so important that we maintain that, that asset management fund to ensure that we have a sufficient reserve to replace that when we need to. With, let's see, 5.6 being a ferric chloride, yeah, that's what I do. Unfortunately, Mr. Scott is not in the room, but speaking of the hypochlorite, the bid process works because we're buying hypochlorite at about $3.31 a gallon, where in the market around here in Livermore, it goes for about $7 a gallon. So we're getting a real bargain. We're getting it for, for half the price. With regards to the trihalomethanes, I, I published a paper on trihalomethanes, so I, I'm fairly familiar with these. The trihalomethane standard is based on drinking two liters a day of 100 micrograms per liter of trihalomethanes. Nobody is going to be drinking two liters of wastewater a day. Furthermore, Mr. Scott mentioned the possibility of using chloramination instead. The ammonia levels, because of the urea in wastewater, tend to be so high that there is no free chlorine to react with the, with the, the radicals that form trihalomethanes. So because you have the ammonia, you're not going to form the trihalomethanes. And as far as the fluctuation of the chlorine residuals, I was on the lava board for a number of years as is Vice Mayor Branning. And there are online monitors to monitor the, the chlorine residual because of this chlorine demand that he referred to. But before the water is discharged, all the chlorine is removed. It, the water is de-chlorinated before it's discharged into the bay, so there is no environmental concern over, over what's happening. So I see Mr. Scott came back in. I just addressed your concerns about trihalomethanes, so just, you know, watch the replay when you can. Thank you. So with that, we have a motion on the table, and any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just a quick note for 5.4 on the sanitation agreement. Prior to the sanitation agreement, I had talked with staff a little bit. There was a disagreement at first with Livermore sanitation about service to multifamily properties. You are entitled, you are entitled a multifamily bulk pickup, but it has to be through your property manager, so it can't just be randomly scheduled, I see, Judy.
Oh, the three.
Not nodding at me, so if you had that disagreement at a certain point in the last few months, please reach out to us, and we can get that. Not nodding at me, so if if you had that disagreement at a certain point in the last few months, uh, please reach out to us and we can get that covered for you. Anything to add, Mr. Erlinson?
And that's the, uh, that's the three pickups a year, right?
That's, that's correct, yes, there.
So it's coordinated, we're all good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any further comments uh on the consent calendar? Uh, all in favor, signature public saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Uh, do I have a motion for five point one?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember uh Dunbar.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's uh, four to one, one abstention from the Vice Mayor. Uh, with that, uh. Closing the consent calendar and moving on to uh, uh, our first public hearing, six point one.
Honorable Mayor Marshall and members of the City Council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. Your first public hearing tonight, six point one. Is going to be presented by Anna Zamboyanga, recycling specialist with the assistance from Judy Erlinson, Public Works Manager. Of the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council will consider approving assessments for the non-payment of services provided by Livermore Sanitation. Livermore Sanitation services approximately twenty nine thousand residential and commercial accounts. Since the council packet and staff report were published and the presentation slides were finalized. Four accounts have either paid their outstanding balance or entered into a payment plan with LSI. So at the time of this meeting, only eighteen residential accounts remain more than twelve months past due. Making them eligible for an assessment. These debts are from unpaid charges from fiscal year twenty twenty four, valuing at approximately twelve thousand dollars. LSI can also not stop service for non-payment per the terms of the franchise agreement. Despite six notifications, which include two notices, multiple phone calls, and a service reduction from LSI. And four notices being from the city of Livermore, the accounts continue to be significantly overdue. LSI has also been willing to negotiate payment plans for past due accounts that contact LSI. Customers had up until the beginning of this meeting to pay their bill and not have the property assessed. Uh, in the, in future letters, the city will provide direction for resources for residents with financial hardship. Per the franchise agreement and the city of Livermore municipal code, LSI assigns its rights to collection to the city. Based on the annual number of properties assessed in prior years. The number of accounts eligible for assessment this year continues to follow the same downward trend. Of the eighteen accounts, two have been assessed in prior years. Staff recommends that the City Council consider protest, adopt a resolution over ruling protest. And confirm the fiscal year twenty twenty four assessments, directing staff to finalize. Uh, to forward a finalized copy of the assessment report to the county tax assessor. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. Staff is available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No public comments been received.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the uh public hearing, bring it back to the council. Uh, any comments or questions from the council, Vice Mayor Branning?
Just a small one, I want to thank staff. Um, I brought up the issue that it's likely that some of the people who are unable to pay on this list really just. Can't do so. They're making choices between, you know, electricity and garbage or food or gas. Um, and so the request I made was that we connect them with services as part of the notification, and it sounds like. Staff is capable and ready to do that as part of this, and so I hope that helps a few of these residents, um, you know. Find a, find a means, because I know LSI has been very open to. Payment plans or, you know, any, any way that they can make it work out. Um, they've been very open to that, so. Uh, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to thank staff for getting that done so quickly.
Just good to see that the number of assessments has gone down pretty consistently over the last few years.
I remember pages, there were pages of these. I remember, you know, two thousand fourteen where we had ninety of them, so uh, obviously this is working and. This is a public health issue. This is not uh just about revenue, it's about public health. Uh, these, uh, you know, garbage attracts vectors and rats and all sorts of uh. Uh. Creatures, so uh, this is a public health issue, so certainly appreciate the diligence that everyone has uh, has maintained. Okay, so with that, uh, we will adjutant motion.
I'll move rule.
Uh, and okay, so, uh, okay, so, well, so I got.
All second.
Councilor Dunbar made the motion. Uh, Councilmember Barry Entros seconds. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, all in favor, signature private saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Moving on to six, six point two. This is uh regarding our uh, uh, public hearing to receive and consider comprehensive housing update uh for the municipal code. Or the development code. Multifamily objective design standards.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. Item six point two, your second public hearing is going to be presented by Turekansol Mz. Associate Planner with the assistance from Steve Riley, Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration tonight is the comprehensive housing update to the development code. And the mixed use and multifamily objective design standards. The proposed project consists of amending the development code to be in compliance with state housing law. Objective design standards to supplement existing city standards that are no longer enforceable under state law. And permit streamlining code amendments to implement the city's adopted housing element. Staff is proposing a new housing section in the development code, which would consist of both entirely new chapters. And chapters that previously existed in other parts of the code and have been modified. The chapters shown here are those where significant local discretion is proposed to be exercised. Those are in the form of standards for accessory dwellings. Standards and regulations for two unit residential developments and urban lot splits. Standards for streamlined review of eligible subdivisions. And ground floor commercial requirements for residential projects proposed in commercial or office districts. Staff is proposing a mixed use and multifamily objective design standards document that will apply to all multifamily residential development proposals. Containing more than ten residential units. The document is broken down into four main sections, which are architectural styles, building types. Frontage types and universal design standards. Shown here are the recommended architectural styles, which are Spanish Mediterranean, Federal, Farmhouse, American Mercantile, Craftsman, and Prairie. Pardon me, the detailed objective design standards document is attached to the staff report. Shown. Where a developer wishes to propose changes to objective design standards. Or affordable housing requirements proposed, a development agreement is required subject to City Council review and approval. As with any development agreement, community benefits that justify the proposed modification would be required. Moving on to project review streamlining, staff proposes amendments to modify the city's existing development review authority requirements. Consistent with housing element policies to increase ministerial approvals of housing projects. Currently, parcel maps require. Planning Commission approval and tentative maps require City Council approval. Proposed changes would allow for parcel maps to be approved at staff level and for tentative maps to be approved at PC level. Additionally. Under current requirements, all residential projects containing five or more units require planning commission review. But proposed changes would allow projects of thirty nine units or less to be reviewed at staff level. Planning Commission would review projects between forty and one hundred and forty nine units outside of a specific plan. And projects of forty units or more within a specific plan. And council would review projects of a hundred and fifty units or more outside of a specific plan. With these proposed review authority changes. An example of a project that previously required City Council review, but would only require Planning Commission review going forward. Is the Shea Aura project shown here. Which is within a specific plan and consists of a hundred and sixty four units and forty five parcels. Some exceptions to projects up to thirty nine units being approved at staff level include the following. Projects which are appealed to Planning Commission and or City Council. Projects with other entitlements requiring Planning Commission or City Council review, such as a rezone or a development agreement. Projects within the downtown specific plan taller than three floors or forty five feet. Which require Planning Commission and City Council review. Projects requiring a public hearing for environmental review pursuant to sequel. And any projects that staff refers to the Planning Commission. In conclusion, staff recommends the City Council find the project exempt from the provisions. Of the California Environmental Quality Act. And approve the mixed use and multifamily objective design standards. Also. Staff recommends uh, the council introduce the Part eleven ordinance. Introduce the permit streamlining ordinance and introduce the internal consistency ordinance. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you for your consideration. We'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment on this?
No public comments been received.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the uh, uh, public hearing, bring it back to the council. Questions or comments from the council? Anybody? Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Okay, I was gonna let someone else go first, but. What? No, okay. Um, so I asked a bunch of questions of staff. They responded that most of it is somewhere in there already. It was a very large document to go through all of the details. Um, but really just trying to see where we can and can't make movement on this. Um, some items are things that state law, you know, at this point forbears us from. Having uh specific guidelines about other things were covered elsewhere. Uh, one of the big concerns I had that is addressed in there, um, but I want to bring it up publicly is about zone zero and fire mitigation. This is something that I've been hearing from uh the many conferences and such I go to that. While right now, zone zero uh rules, which is basically fire mitigation rules are. For new developments and optional on ol- older developments, your current home, for example. Uh, in the future, they're going to become required for everyone, including current uh buildings, which means that it's possible that. Many residents will have to do some hopefully minor modifications, but might be required to do some minor modifications, and those. Are a mixture of uh, some imposition from the state and some imposition from the insurance companies. My reason to bring it up now is that I don't want people to feel surprised in the future when there are costs associated with this. Our guidelines are covering for future buildings. They will all have the protections of the zone zero protections built into them. But for buildings that are already standing right now, it might not be there, and. This might be a cost that's coming to everyone in the state, so. Uh, be aware, it is something to look into, see if your house is, you know, already compliant with zone zero. I recommend that for residents everywhere. Uh, thankfully, our new design guidelines do cover it and cover it well. Uh. I do want to ask for one item and get some council feedback or approval on this, which is one item I'd like to add it in. Uh, which is really, I want to look at adding in language that encourages the use of edible plants as well, um. And so staff had some creative ideas around this, um, which was basically allowing them. Allowing projects to take part of their usable open space, using that um as uh, community gardens or similar. I'd also like to look into where possible, uh, part of the pollinator requirement, if maybe some of that could be met with edible plants as well. There's typically more upkeep with edible plants though, so I do think some language in there, um, making sure it's clear that. You would be expected to upkeep the land with them. You couldn't plant tomatoes the year you had uh the development go in and then let the ground lay fallow for the rest of time. Uh, so I want to make sure we work on language that. Provides for that opportunity. I would like to encourage as much as possible people to grow edible plants on their properties, including commercial and industrial spaces. But I also don't want it to turn into fallow ground, so. Uh. That work for staff as guidance?
Vice Mayor Brandon, if I can just inquire as far as your direction to staff today, are you asking for formal amendments to the items before you, or are you asking them for guidance for future amendments to return to you at a future date?
Uh, I was looking for an amendment to the current item in front of us.
Yeah, are you looking specifically at the ordinances or at the objective design standards?
The design standards.
Okay. Um, because the order is, if you're making amendment, we'd have to have the language today. Um, so how do you proceed? How do you plan to proceed with regard to the amendments to the objective design standards?
We can include language in our objective design standards. We do have some language already about. Native plants and trees and pollinators, and it could be um, an add into that same section. As you mentioned, we'd have to write it carefully to consider uh maintenance. For that type of landscaping and to make sure it meets our other aesthetic goals as well.
Does that? Meet the requirement or?
Just trying to maintain expectations. If, um, would the council like to see those again, or are you comfortable with staff completing that language and just moving forward?
Uh, I'd be comfortable with staff taking the direction and completing that language.
Okay, so staff, you can work with my staff and the City Clerk's Office to amend the resolution to expand in the recitals and the direction. Um, now therefore, the City Council resolves as follows. As you understand the direction to be, then I think you can proceed.
Question, uh, point of, point of clarification, I guess. You're intending this to only apply to multifamily and mixed use developments as that's the objective design standards we're reviewing, correct?
Yeah, broad broader, I have brought up other areas where it would be great, but yes.
Clarify what we're doing to hear.
Well, there, there is the provision, a minimum of thirty percent of all new shrub planting shall be pollinators. That was on uh, uh, page four eighty two. So that's, that's, there's already an inclusion in there.
Yeah, so I'm looking at edible plants being included and encouraged as part of that. Um, it's, it's an expansion on that, and I believe staff. Uh, from the responses I got from staff, they have, they're comfortable with the idea. I just want to make sure that council is also comfortable with the idea.
Uh, just to. Build it a little bit on your, your point about uh, that you don't want to lay fallow. Uh, if somebody doesn't come by and pick the food. Uh, then you run the risk of of attracting, you know, rats and other vectors. So it's gotta be, it has to be maintained.
It has to be maintained.
Fully.
Would we be thinking that those are handled through landscape maintenance districts as we handle existing?
I would generally assume that uh, community development or um neighborhood preservation and the residents would be able to manage it.
And the direction is for a portion of the thirty percent pollinators to be sort of traded off for?
Either.
In your head?
Yeah, either to use that or as an additional use of the uh usable open space, so unallowable use in the usable open space. So unallowable use in the usable open space section.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
And this is the added as an option, but not a requirement.
Right.
Steph's feeling on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's an acceptable change. And again, this would be an encouragement as opposed to a mandate.
And everybody's to come back or just we'll trust staff with it?
I would trust staff with this.
Very good. Customer bring it to us.
Yeah, we had a lot of pollinator plants in my neighborhood and people freaked out because their kids, some of them had, were allergic to bees. So guess what happened to our pollinator plants? The other thing I want to say is that we were talking about jargon a while ago. I'm not sure if people understand what zone zero is. It's not a temperature gauge or anything, it's ember. You know, when the ember, when the fires get going, the embers go and that's what catches a lot of buildings on fire. And that's what it means, an ember free zone of five feet. Just in case people want to know what zone zero is, that's what it is.
Those your comments? Okay.
All right. First off, I wanted to say thank you to the design advisory group, the sort of new, new form of sorts or formed just for this. And all the work they put in as well as the planning commission. Read through their minutes, was thankful for a lot of the input that they had. A lot of things that they had and that I had in this packet were. You know, things because we're touching the design standards I want to touch, but I think staff's intention generally was to. Replicate most of the requirements that we already tried to enforce objectively in an objective way. Is that, I'm getting a head nod here. So there, there are things that I might want to touch in the general plan that we could probably come back to in a couple of different ways. So thanks for going through that with me. Things like dark sky lighting were, was one of the examples for that, where we're maintaining our existing half a foot handle at the ground today. But we might revisit exactly what the standard is as we go through the general plan update. I had, I went through a couple of things with staff. More examples included. The, just a list of species types and the idea to look at noise requirements between units in multifamily housing. We, Europe generally has higher levels of noise insulation between units that, than the US doesn't really have any standards at all. So something to consider as we move forward. As far as items for today that I wanted to look at, that are actually fairly relevant. One thing that I noticed was that we have a requirement today for HVAC to not be within ten feet of occupiable roof areas. But we didn't have a similar standard for ground floor. We have a sort of covering requirement. So that doesn't get viewed from the ground floor, but not maybe a distance requirement. And I wanted to make sure that those HVAC or other utility easements didn't come too close to a public space. Like a green space or a tot lot or something like that. Because I find them to be quite noisy. They really dim the atmosphere of where the nice outdoor benches tend to be in my own development. So if staff's okay with adding that requirement, or if we are, I suppose, that'd be something I'd look, look to do.
Through the mayor, is there a particular distance that you are looking to have that separation?
I would, I would see, took to you, I was taking ten feet just because it was the same requirement for the roof and I didn't really see much difference. But it could be less if it was audibly screened with the screening that exists. So I'll leave it to staff to decide what the exact number is. I had a question relating to the requirement for walls, windows and doors to have different, a different facade, a different entry door. Different design, a color and details. I wasn't sure if we were trying to. That all four of those had to be different or just at least one thing had to be different? Maybe we could clarify that?
The intent was that all four of those things would be different, so you'd have four distinct doors.
Okay, maybe that's a bit much as in like they get so different that you don't have. Identifiable pattern repetition between facades. I'm not sure if that makes sense.
It, it does make sense. We, we are balancing that with one of our. Objective standards is to create unique units within multi-tenant buildings. So that from the ground floor, you feel like you've got separate units and they're identifiable to the owner. And you don't have that repetition, especially in some of these projects that are very visible from major streets. So we did want a variety of color materials to sort of break up the massing of some of these longer buildings. We found that to be fairly effective over the years, but it is a balance to not have too many colors and too much, too much, right, I guess. And I would add, this is something where the council could direct us. We don't have not a strong opinion from staff. So if you wanted to allow some repetition, we could.
It felt like this was trying to apply, or at least it read to me as it was applying mostly to doors and it felt weird to have a different colored door. Unit to unit. I think that was where it got too much for me. You could probably come up with different design panels and facades. But colors didn't, was a little overkill for me. I'll look to the rest if they agree at the end. I had, in my head in site planning, this is kind of covered in the ATP, but I really tried to make a point of it in recent applications like with the. Like with one of the development agreements we looked at recently was making sure that sites connected adjacent to each other if there was a pedestrian path. If there was an adjacent street that looked like a dead-ended or a clear walking path. I wasn't sure exactly how to objectively define it, but I wanted them to connect. I don't want to end up with fences of two pedestrian passages staring at each other. Especially for residential. Obviously for commercial, there are access requirements and things we want to be careful of. But if staff could add language to that effect, I would appreciate it. I wanted to discuss, we have requirements for raised porches. There's a little bit in some styles for ramp designs, for example. But I wanted to make sure that we were clear that raised porches maybe didn't apply to, or steps necessarily didn't apply to. The percentage of units that we want to be AD accessible. So just making that nice and crystal clear. And then. Two things that I wanted to bring up that were more. Of a conversation. One was just, we have a requirement for a minimum number of colors in the facade. Not sure we've seen a case where we've had too many colors. I think that's more of a problem with modern architecture rather than what we actually have in our design standards. But it might be reasonable to put a maximum number, just to make sure we don't go overboard. If we have ten different colors on a facade, not sure that anybody would actually propose that, but while we were here, I thought I'd bring it up. The last question I had was about massing requirements. I brought this up as a planning commissioner as well. Where I understand what we're trying to do, we're trying to break up the facade, make it look like not, maybe not necessarily the buildings unique, are unique. Like we're not pretending that the other part of the building is a different building completely, even though some styles really try to do that. I don't think it works. But it felt weird to me that. When we have over two hundred feet of facade continuously in one building, we then require plane breaks every fifty. But if we have a facade that's less than two hundred feet, we don't require any. That felt like there was a gap there. I, I'm, I've been paying attention to the building south of Legacy. It's the brick facade across the street and that's about a hundred and fifty feet long and doesn't have any articulation in that length. And so I was wondering if that was really the intent and maybe my proposal was either. That you could go to a hundred feet overall, if you go over two hundred feet, so have at least one plane break. Or you could choose one of the options between having a plane break and a roofline break. Or alternatively, convert and require it for buildings that are less than two hundred feet. So they have at least one plane break for consistency sake.
Good point, because you said for a two hundred foot continuous building, it requires. Plane breaks at fifty feet.
Right.
But under, under that, nothing.
Right.
So yeah, it's something that, that does seem to make sense.
Is staff okay with any of those directions?
So staff agrees that we didn't want to overpopulate the standards in general with all these plane break requirements. That would negatively interact with the architectural requirements and make the architecture not as, you know, as it should be. So we, we tried to lean on, lean on the architectural requirements, the articulation, articulation requirements. Roof massing related requirements in the different architectural styles. So that we wouldn't have to have these types of requirements that you're pointing out. We did want to include them for larger projects with wall planes in excess of two hundred feet. Because we thought that that would be too long of a wall plane for there not to be anything. So the degree to which we can. Alter the specific requirements is, is definitely. That, that's, that's possible to alter the specific requirements. But we did, did want to have requirements for larger projects with. Larger, longer facades.
I think for me, it was the, the combination of the requirement for the facade blank and the roofline break. And there was a third requirement on that page that I don't remember being all there at fifty feet. Or exactly fifty feet. And I'm, I'm even willing to go with like an averaging, so you have two breaks at thirty feet. And then no break in between for seventy feet. If you had a hundred and forty foot long stretch or something like that. I'm not sure how to design something on the fly here for this, but that was my general sense for things.
What, what if there was some requirement? I'm trying to think, one, what you're asking for and I want to also make sure from staff that like this makes sense as far as, you know, design guidelines go. But if we had something along the lines that said, you know, if it's between a hundred and two hundred feet, it has a minimum of one plane break. Some language along those lines was that, does that work with the, with our architectural goals as well as kind of fitting? The flexibility we're looking for while still making sure to break up the massing?
If I may add as well, the one thing I wanted to make sure was clarified as well was it's at least one. But you can't just have a plane break at five feet off the edge of the, the building. It's, you know, needs to be sort of substantially in the middle or substantially offset.
So we can certainly add a provision that would add a, a requirement for a plane break between one hundred and two hundred feet. That makes sense. And we can note that it could, needs to be, you know, in the center, two thirds of the building, something like that. So that it's, it's not just off at one edge and doesn't make sense. So that would be our suggestion.
And does that fit in also just with the general kind of architectural guidelines we're looking for? I'm trying to. Having a little trouble in my mind imagining exactly what a hundred and sixty foot facade would look like.
It's the brick building south of Legacy. That's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, a hundred feet is a pretty long building. A block is typically three hundred feet in our downtown to give you a sense of perspective. And so it's, it's relatively straightforward to add a plane break at between one hundred and two hundred feet.
Yeah, and I think the requirement at fifty is not completely overkill and for some reason, some. Designs over articulate it beyond that and I, I don't want to force them to not, but I also think it's a bit excessive. So. I think I'd be okay with staff's recommendation there of something between a hundred, two hundred for a single break.
That works for me.
Staff clear on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. And that was everything I had. I wanted to again, thank you for all the work because I did get a lot out of reading through this and seeing the, you know, seeing some things that I want to come back to. But seeing the conversion from what we have into something that's very tight. I did want to address the comments that we got about the, the ADUs. I think staff's intention is pretty clear to me. I did see some. I did see how they, the, the public comment came to the conclusion that they came to in terms of misunderstanding exactly what we're trying to go at. I think there probably is a third way to word this that actually makes it clear to both parties that I'd suggest staff work on. But I don't think it really impacts the overall way that staff will apply the standards. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Further comments? Customer one? Okay, I think that customer Dunbar just addressed the, the HDF letter on ADUs. And that that's been resolved, correct? Okay. Customer bring it to us. Any questions, comments? With the farm worker housing, there's a specification for the number of bedrooms. And yet, yeah, we heard horror stories about some of the facilities over in Half Moon Bay. Where you had a lot of people crammed into these tiny units. Do we have any stipulation as far as the number of inhabitants? I know it says they, they limited to so many beds per unit. Three beds per, per, per household unit. Is there any limit that we can set as far as number of inhabitants?
So in the, in chapter eleven for the farm worker housing chapter, that's been updated consistent with state law. There are maximums and in our case, it's twelve units. And each unit is for a family that, and they can have up to three beds per unit. So that means you can get up to thirty-six beds in that project and that's the maximum. And there's also a state standard that goes along with that. They need to meet certain state health requirements. So you don't have that overcrowded situation. So we're going with state law on that. And so there is a maximum.
Well, they, but, but actually identified, it said, yeah, because page five, five eighty-eight is. Group quarters should not contain more than thirty-six beds and family units not contain more than three beds. But is there any limit to the number of people that you could have in there?
So I don't think the, the state law around farm worker housing does have a provision on the number of people. We do have through the building code occupancy standards that we can take a look at with these projects if we, if we identify a concern.
Okay, so we can come back on occupancy standards, people per square foot.
Yes.
Okay. And it was interesting that it, one of them states that a maximum size is twelve family units. But two pages later, it refers to fifty units. Help me on that one. How can you have a maximum of twelve and then they, the state allows fifty? Because it's the state, right?
Yeah, so that, that language referring to fifty units is, is in regard to timelines. Under which the city has to deem the application complete and then approve the application. And this, that language included in the draft ordinance is taken directly from state law and state law does specify fifty.
But, but we, we limit it to twelve.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so by our, by our standards, it would have to be expedited because it's twelve units, which is less than fifty. But it's up to fifty is the requirement.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we can look to see if we can clarify that so that we avoid confusion among our applicants.
I, I, I get it, but it, so it's just, it's the, the state requirement. We, that's, that's our workaround for that. It, it's like, yeah, our, our code says that the affordable units will be uniformly dispersed throughout the project. And yet the state took that ability away from us in a recent project on the Harridge Development. So I'm, I'm used to this from the, the state necessarily helping us out. Okay, the rest gets down into minutia and. Down into the weeds, but I think that all of our questions have been answered. Are there any further questions or comments? I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
Were you all happy with the suggestions that I provided for staff to go back to in terms of?
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I thought I asked the staff and they sort of nodded their heads.
I could ask a clarifying question, council member. On the pathways connected, connecting, were you looking to have pathways within a project connect or pathways between projects?
It was two neighboring developments to the degree feasible. Obviously, some might already have gates up and we can't force them to take them down, but in the case that they don't, or in case there's a roadway. You know, I'd like to see them connect.
So we'll look to add some language that identifies where we're feasible.
Very good.
That meets the council's.
Yeah, I know that's a little bit hard to do objectively, but you know. Yeah, I know that's a little bit hard to do objectively, but you know, when you see it.
Okay. Staff clear on, uh, the comments made by, uh, Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
With that case, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I'll move approval with my recommended changes and Councilmember Brandings agreed upon changes for pollinators with staff's discretion on the exact outcomes or language of all those. And would otherwise move approval for the, uh, one, two, three, four, five parts of the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, vice, uh, motion made by, uh, Councilmember Dunbar, seconded by Vice Mayor Branding. Uh, any discussion with that motion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. And moving on to 6.3, the, uh, public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewable energy and storage, uh, purchase agreement.
Honorable Mayor Marshon and members of the city council, um, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Burge. Item 6.3, your last public hearing tonight is going to be presented by Tricia Panto, the city sustainability program manager. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Back in, uh, February of this year, City Council authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with Ava Community Energy to install solar with battery backup systems at five city facilities. Um, the Livermore facilities were part of a large portfolio of projects across several cities within Ava's service territory, uh, which were to be financed and owned by a company named Greenbridge. Um, unfortunately, Greenbridge decided to withdraw from the project following, um, actions at the federal level that created uncertainty around their ability to meet the rates and timelines outlined in the original agreement. And as a result, the city manager did not execute, uh, the original agreement authorized by council at the last meeting. Um, Ava was not in a, in a position to finance an entire, the entire portfolio of projects, but as an alternative, their board of directors did authorize a revised structure in which Ava would finance and own a smaller portfolio of projects. So the agreement that you are considering tonight is a revised 25-year power purchase agreement to install rooftop solar with battery storage at two city facilities instead of five. So it's the civic center meeting hall, which we are in right now, and the maintenance service center. And these were the two projects that were determined to still be financially and logistically feasible, uh, given the April 2026 deadline to grandfather solar projects under the state's previous net energy metering policy. Um, and these systems will still provide benefits to the city, including expanding our portfolio of clean and renewable energy, providing backup power during outages, um, reducing time of use, energy costs, and lowering our reliance on diesel generators. The financial terms outlined in the revised agreement are largely the same as the original agreement. Um, there's still no upfront costs, capital costs to the city. Ava, instead of Greenbridge, will finance, install, own, operate, maintain the system. So we have no ongoing maintenance costs. Um, and the city will make monthly payments to Ava for the energy generated from the panels and stored in the batteries. Energy costs will be slightly less than we would pay for electric, grid electricity without the project. Uh, we won't be guaranteed significant cost savings that we were seeing in the original, um, agreement with the larger portfolio. Um, but will be energy cost savings still over the 25-year contract. Um, and then the contract still relies on the project's achieving, um, grandfather status under NIM 2.0. So staff recommends that the city council adopt two resolutions tonight. The first determining that the, the projects are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And then the second, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in substantially the same form as the draft included in the agenda tonight. And determining that doing so is still in the best interest of the city. So that includes staff's presentation. We're available for questions. We also have two representatives from Ava Community Energy who are here tonight to answer any additional questions you have from Ava.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. Alan Marling.
Mayor and council members, I'm saddened but not surprised that chaos at the federal level has hurt us locally, scuttling our original plans for this solar, uh, projects. I do appreciate you going forward and doing something the best we can do under the circumstances. I am in favor of this project and more solar energy being built in Livermore. It's going to make us cleaner, more resilient and healthier. Um, I look forward to seeing more, even more ambitious and visible projects. Solar lowers my, seeing solar lowers my blood pressure, whether it's the solar over the Granada parking lot. In general, I'm happy to see it. I think it improves the area aesthetically. Uh, just that vision of a future which we can be sustainable in. Uh, but again, I appreciate you doing the best we can under these dire circumstances. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, gentlemen, did you wish to make any comments?
I think it's already on. Um, well, first I would just want to thank you for the opportunity to, uh, accompany Tricia and present in front of you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. Um, it's, it's also just really exciting to be in the building where one of the projects is happening. Uh, we've walked around this building so many times in the last six months, um, scoping things out and, uh, making sure that everything was copacetic. And, uh, I just want to acknowledge that, uh, we are aware that dropping the number of sites down to two per city, uh, was, was certainly not everyone's first choice, but we appreciate the opportunity and the work that Tricia and her staff has done, uh, to find a compromise that we can go forward with. Um, and I also just want to say that, that Ava's board was very enthusiastic about this kind of new opportunity that we stumbled into where Ava, uh, is going to, to own assets. And we're going to get to see how this, this plays out so that we can, uh, hopefully venture into future phases of this. So just wanted to, to add that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we're going to close the, uh, public hearing, bring it back to the council. Uh, questions, comments from the, uh, council?
Well, I just sit on the Ava ward, so I had a little, I was biased. Anyway, we were trying to get smaller projects and one I really wanted was, uh, coverage over the police station to protect some of the vehicles back there. And I did lobby, uh, the CEO, but they couldn't figure out how to do it. And they were a little nervous. There's a little discussion on the board about actually owning assets and, uh, maybe we overcome that. So, uh, I appreciate that and I wish we had more. And, uh, well, too bad someone got elected, otherwise we would have had more.
Councilmember Dunbar?
I just wanted to say staff, I know that pivoting on this probably wasn't fun, um, but I thank you for doing so and establishing what we can get out of it because every little bit matters. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I also would have loved to see the original plan, um, but I, I'm glad to see we're at least able to do the two sites.
So a quick question, uh, the staff report says that the city will make payments, uh, to Ava for, uh, uh, 23 and a half cents, uh, per kilowatt, uh, hour and, uh, uh, 21 cents, uh, per kilowatt hour of solar generation. Uh, what are we currently paying?
So I wish that was a really straightforward answer, but, um, it kind of varies. So we have a, we have a rate structure, um, that has different generation rates, delivery rates. Um, it, it varies by time of, of use for the day.
Are we saving money? Bottom line, are we saving?
Bottom line, we are saving money.
Okay.
Over the 25-year contract.
Ultimately was my question. Okay. So we're saving money. Well, thank you very much then for, uh, for all of you for negotiating all of this. It's, it was kind of a bumpy ride there, but, uh, we got here and that's the important thing. And it's going to better say, serve the community. So thank you very much. Uh, if there's no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Motion made by, uh, our Ava representative, Councilmember Barrientos?
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, uh, moving on to, uh, committee reports, matters initiated. We'll start on this side, Councilmember Barrientos, uh, uh, anything exemplary that you wanted to, to highlight?
Well, I did, you know, at court, I didn't see the link. I'm not sure why I don't see the link. But I did go to the 4th of July. I had a good time there and, uh, bought some of those cookies. And I left to go have breakfast. I was going to come back, but I saw a line coming off the freeway trying to get into the airport. So I didn't make it back to the second half.
It's a huge success.
I'm on the monitor committee, so that's trash committees. Should call trash committee. Anyway, so, uh, we already see what's going on in the landfill and everything. It's pretty good right now. No big issues there. And stop waste, uh, the meeting was just, what he does if we don't have actually things to vote on, he gives us like a lesson of what's going on with the, the stop waste and the efforts are to try to recycle food, especially, uh, food, food. Yeah, I think I was trying to figure out, we, we waste like 37 billion tons a year in food. And Alameda has one in four people who need food. So we're throwing a lot of food away and their whole idea is trying to figure out how do we coop that food and not just actually throw it away. So it was edible. There are contractors out there that a restaurant can connect with and that food will be taken and given to people that need it. I remember, uh, getting in trouble with my wife went to Costco and bought those Tomahawk steaks. Just like, I don't know, four to six. And I didn't see the actual cost, but you can't have that, so return it. And they throw those away. But if you return meat or anything like that, they throw it away. It's like, they use compostable material. And the other thing is the little green little bags of people use it for vegetables. Those are not recyclable. So don't put those in, uh, compost bins.
Yeah, it says they're compostable, but, but we don't, we're not able to compost those.
Yeah, there has some plastic in it. So, and last thing is I put on my, you know, mask and I went down to SPCA. And went through and checked out the, the kennels and the people there and then I crossed the street to the animal shelter. And, you know, this, if I wasn't, I almost took a dog home with me, but anyway, it was interesting, uh, just to check it out. And, uh, I didn't tell them who I was, because
Very cool.
But there are a lot of dogs there. If you want a dog, go get one.
All right. Better to, better to adopt. Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar?
I only have two things to point out. Um, one, picking up on the SPCA item, I saw some community concern out there about, um, feral cats. There's resources available on the SPCA's website about why they don't take feral cats. It's a sort of national policy that they have aligned with a lot of other people. So take a read at that. It's not because we don't care about them. It's because there's actually some unintended consequences by, by taking them. It's actually better to leave them, um, spaying and neutering and other things like that, illness, um, cats that can't care for themselves, you're welcome to take to SPCA, but um, feral and otherwise healthy, um, is a little bit different for the reasons that are on there. Staff and I have had some conversations about the fourth. Um, I was also watching the, the lines as I was leaving. Luckily, most of us got there very early because we had the starting 9:30 or whatever the start time was, nine o'clock. Um, but, uh, I know we've done some wild swings. The city is aware. We've done some swings in attendance from the super, super hot day to what it was and we're you know, learning from those and moving forward and we'll be better next year in, uh, in different ways. So.
Councilmember Wong?
I actually wanted to follow up on the 4th of July because I was one of those people who went late and probably at the peak because it took me 45 minutes from where I was stopped on 84 to turn onto Kitty Hawk to get to where I actually had a parking spot, but it took me 45 minutes. And so I was wondering if there are ways to direct traffic. And as, you know, I, I kept trying to see where would we divert people? There are parking space, parking lots on 84 that are unused. Could we divert some of the traffic there? And there were people walking on the side of the road that didn't seem very safe. Is that sort of worried for those people? A lot of them had little children with them, some of them had dogs and so I, that whole thing didn't seem super safe and was sort of frustrating. If I were a community member who took 45 minutes to get to the airport, I probably wouldn't go back. So i- if we could sort of figure out how to redirect traffic next year, that would be great. But otherwise it was great. It was a great event when I got in. There were so many people. It was a lot of fun, music, food. It was great. Well done.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mine's nice and easy. Uh, I spent the last couple of weeks in Peru and Chile, so I wasn't going to any city-run events. Um, I will say one, one of many insights, uh, being able to, you know, privileged enough to be able to travel to South America. There are a lot of infrastructure concerns in South America and I know that you know, we get complaints on the fees or on what government does and you know, people like to complain about government, but travel to somewhere where maybe things aren't going so smoothly and you'll see that we're doing a really great job here. It is very nice to be on, you know, smoothly paved roads with functioning plumbing and, uh, potable water. So, uh, just a reflection of my travels, it was an amazing trip. I'm, you know, really feel very privileged to be able to have gone on it. Uh, had a great time, saw some wonderful things, posted a lot of pictures, um, and I'm happy to be back, if not a little tired, but, uh, ready to work. And I know we've got a lot going on over the next few weeks. So excited for all of that. Thank you. Welcome back.
Uh, let's see, the, uh, on the June 26th, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Uh, we heard an update on the rail safety enhancement program. Livermore is going to be a part of that. Uh, and the local distribution program compliance report, uh, which was significant because in the report, it includes the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Pavement Condition Index, uh, which indicates that, uh, Livermore, uh, roads continue to be in the top three, uh, for Alameda County in the quality of the roads. We have a, a score of 77 and that puts us in the top three for Alameda County. Uh, and really in the top 10 for the nine Bay Area counties. So, uh, our roads are comparatively are really in great shape. I was also at the, uh, July 4th celebration with about 10,000 other people. Uh, it was a great event, had the, uh, the PBJ, and it's not a sandwich, but that's a B25 bomber. A remarkable plane that was out there along with the, uh, P51 Mustang and the P40 Tomahawk. It was a, it's a great event. It really was. And not nearly as hot this year. Uh, but maybe we could look something, maybe a shuttle bus between, uh, Los Pascitas College and getting people down there. Uh, somewhere to, to move people a little bit, uh, better. Because obviously it's a very popular event and we want to make sure that, that people have the opportunity to enjoy it. And, uh, I presented the 100th, uh, birthday certificate to Norma Ware. Uh, just again, highlighted the fact that, uh, ladies and light bulbs last longer in Livermore. She's a hundred years old. So, uh, recognize that. Sharp lady. She was, uh, very sharp. It's a, uh, it was a lot of fun. And, uh, finally, uh, Livermore lost a dear friend and, uh, it's John Concanon, one of the great icons of our community. Uh, fourth generation, uh, winemaker at Concanon. Uh, and, uh, he had a very successful career in, uh, medical technology. And came back here and really focused on restoring the, uh, the identity of the Concanon winery. He was responsible, he created a, a wine called Crimson and Clover, uh, as a tribute to his father, uh, Jim Concanon. Uh, who was the first winemaker in America to produce a varietal, uh, called Petit Syrah. And it was because of John Concanon's efforts that Concanon is one of only five wineries in the nation to be represented at the Smithsonian Institute in, uh, in Washington DC. Uh, their Angelica wine from 1929. Their Angelica wine from 1929 is there and it was made during prohibition because they were making sacramental wines. So he really put Concanon back on the map. One of his hopes was that Concanon would eventually come back under local ownership. And he lived to see that happen. And if you go by Concanon, you'll see that the vineyards are now being replanted. So truly an icon of our community, someone who's made tremendous contributions. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Yeah. Oh, sure. It's funny, I, we've both been responding on that, on that issue on Nextdoor. And there was a complaint that there was, there were no places, there was only one spot available at the Vine Theater. But there were five spaces altogether and there's three of them were unoccupied. So it's, we can ask staff to, to review the, the, the number of ADA spots that we have around the community, make sure that we're in compliance. But as I said, there were, there were five spots behind the, the theater. But people wanted to park right in front of it. And to be honest, that's, it's, it's physically impossible to have a spot for everybody right in front of the theater.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can review the standards on that certainly and, and see about adding additional. And of course, the other thing is there's drop-off parking on McLeod that people can stop for, drop somebody off and then park the car and then come back around and get, collect them.
If I may. I've already been giving staff some ideas on handicap parking in downtown. I'd propose that we come back around to it once our new garage is open and we have additional spaces and we know what the usage of that new garage is and where, how things sort out. And with that data, we could probably come up with some more ideas at that point.
Okay, sure. Staff have sufficient direction? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting in honor and memory of John Concanon. Thank you very much.